Ladies and gentlemen, it is slightly after 7:00 p.m. On December 17th of 2019, I'd like to call the final meeting for the year of 2019 in the City of Portland Common Council, meeting to order. If you'll all rise if you're able, for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First up, opportunity for public comments. Three minutes and link an address to council on topics that the city council can address. Steve Nuka, if you could please use the microphone and the podium. Thomas, thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I had a few different things to talk about. The first was the code changes, Chapter 300. It appears that there would be a change for single-family R1 houses where if you have a single-lane driveway, which is most driveways in the City of Portland, that you couldn't have two cars parked in it, which is insane, of course. So it appears that that's part of what you're voting on tonight, so you'll need to say no, because otherwise thousands of families won't be able to park their two cars in their driveway without being in violation. And there were a few typos in that law also. My understanding is all that's supposed to go to the planning board before it's voted on by the councils, so maybe that needs to be done to look things over a little bit. Part of, you know, one thing that was supposed to be in parking was going to be thrown in with fencing. And then another thing that was supposed to be amended isn't in any of the paperwork or the supporting documents, so it doesn't make a lot of sense. So that's that. And then I was not happy with the city deciding not to continue with the DEA drug task force in Syracuse. So the question is, how much money would it take if we could raise some money in the community to be part of that task force? You know, there's such a drug problem and suicides and the cost of somebody who's an addict, you know, in the court system, possibly jail, crime, rehabs. So there's quite a cost to the community. I don't know, you know, maybe 50 kids a year that get screwed up with drugs that might mess up their whole life. So I'm quite interested and didn't feel there was a good reason not to be part of that program. But, you know, it sounded like it was money, wear and tear on tires and cars and silly stuff like that. So the question is, how much money would it take? We could probably raise the money, get back in the program and help some kids. And then blue bags, I guess, you're voting on going up to $6 for the big bags and $4 for the small bags. I am a landlord and I have some dumpsters, and it costs me $32 a week for a four-yard dumpster to be dumped. That includes the tipping fee and taking it away. And so it's less than a dollar a bag that I end up, you know, being charged for. It's a free fee to the tenants, but it's just interesting. So for a dollar a bag or less, a local business is able to make the numbers work. So it's, you know, maybe we could think about that one. It's like $35,000 just for the bags. That's the expense to the city to buy the plastic bags. You know, we could go to tags and have the tenant or the, you know, people in the community have garbage cans, metal garbage cans, and then you don't get the squirrels and the crows and things like that. So just something to think about, how other businesses can charge so much less to do the same thing. I'm not knocking, you know, how it's done and bidding and all that. It's just maybe there's another way to do things. Then with the recycling, that sounds like now it's harder to make money on recycling and, you know, we talked about China and what happened there. They don't accept a lot of that anymore and that crashed the market. But it gets interesting, you know, if you're moving a bunch of paper around, driving it here, reprocessed, driving it all around, it could be that cardboard and paper has a greater value as fuel. You know, there's biofuels, growing different crops that are then burned, you know, it's a net neutral carbon cycle. And there exist boilers, there's a place out in Pennsylvania, they have boilers for biofuels, and it's a gasification type thing, so the smoke is reburned in a ceramic type setting. And then there's a centrifuge that takes care of the particulates, so it's just pretty much totally clean coming out. So there's that. And then at the glass and the metal cans, if there's no market, just make some piles up at the landfill and cover it, you know, the metal will last a long time. The glass is not going anywhere, maybe someday it would have value, but instead of paying to get rid of it, just store it up there. It's not hurting anything, there's lots of labs to do. Okay, thank you. And the last one is if you guys could think about the bulk purchase for the 10-year smoke detectors. You know, they're pretty expensive, but, you know, in this town, you'd probably need five or 10,000 of them in it with the city. And the city's good at getting grants, or at least the bulk purchase, you could bring the cost down because they're pretty pricey. Thank you.
Mayor's report. Let's start off with some happy news. We have an employee who's worked in the water department 40 years. I don't believe Stephanie is present today, correct? But Stephanie Matisse has been with the city 40 years officially and like to recognize and thank her. We have a certificate, actually two, for her. Thank her for her longevity and dedicated service to the city. So give her a round of applause. And I'm going to ask indulge one more topic. There's been some news in the press about some statements and where some people, elected officials even, may stand with regard to affiliation with hate groups. And I think the publicity that's been going around, it's important that we make statements at times because there's occasions where silence is viewed as tacit approval. And there's been some press recently and I felt it necessary to state a position because the City of Portland, the City of Portland that I know, where I live, we are open to people regardless of color, creed, religion, other things that might make us different from one person to the next. And being supportive and accepting of people who may have some differences is part of the fabric of American society. And I'm willing to acknowledge that my life experiences, because of my color of my skin, are maybe different than some other people's. Maybe there's been some good things for me just because of that. And that is troublesome in some level because why would I be treated differently than somebody else? So when topics come up and we think, well, there's groups out there, for example, the KKK, and there's different versions of the history of our society in general, and different versions of the history of some of these groups. But if a group stands for something that is detrimental to a group of people that are part of the fabric of American society, I don't see how any American can sit there and say that that is okay. So as mayor, as a person, I think it's important that I say publicly, and I say it here tonight, I reject a hate group such as the KKK. And there's no room in our society to assume that other people will think the same and that it is incumbent upon people in society to make statements like this because otherwise maybe people think, well, it's okay, and then the line moves. And we need to continue as a society to work for a better place for everyone. Thank you for indulging me. Minutes, minutes from the December 3rd meeting of 2019, like to accept the motion to file the minutes as they are proposed. Katie Sullivan, we have support. Carlos Ferrer, discussion, the minutes look correct.
There's an issue in the way our tables displayed. I can't put my finger on it, but maybe it's just one table.
It might be because they come in a Word doc sometimes.
Since they're not coming up or you're unable to see the whole document, what's the...
Come my office to the fourth floor.
Give me a copy, the paper copy. Were there any additions, corrections, anything that jumped out at council? Flip to the second page and right at the top.
I should have an issue with my tablet.
All the holidays are coming up, and the tablet is not working. All right, all those in favor of filing the minutes as they are, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? File the minutes. And I'll ask for two changes to our agenda. We have some guests in the audience, there are two items. The discussion, it's on the agenda as number 10, discussion and update on the Parker School Task Force. I'd ask if we made that right after number five on the agenda. And we also have the superintendent for the County Highway Department, and recycling is the last item on the agenda. If we move that to number 18, just after the Parker discussion. Does that mean we're through?
Sure.
And after number nine, Chief Catalano will be up for what is number nine on the agenda. We had a recent request due to a pending retirement for a potential hire, and I'll ask council to hear the chief at that point in time and then to consider lifting the hiring freeze moving forward to potentially have a recruiter, a candidate into the police academy in January.
So which number will that be?
Oh, everything did renumbered, so I'm not even going to predict. Well, pretend not including the other ones, but we'll renumber. So we'll move on formally. Number one, consideration of resolution to approve the special event application and all other applications for the Corn Ducky Derby on May 2nd of 2020 from 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Motion to consider by Kathy Carthy, second. Katie Sullivan, discussion.
Ducks away.
It's a great fundraiser for the entire community and it's a fun event.
Yes.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number two, resolution to waive the fees for the special event application for the Corn Ducky Derby, motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second. Carlos Ferrer, discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number three, consideration of subordination request to facilitate the right refinance of a first mortgage on a property funded under the city's housing REIT validation program, and this is per recommendation of the city loan committee, motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second. Troy Beckwood. Were there any questions? And the property, I'm looking for the address, and I should add this. Linda, what's the property address?
5153 Clinton Ave.
5153 Clinton, thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number four, discussion pertaining to the city's proposed 2019 community development block grant application for the administration of a citywide income property program, motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second. Carlos Ferrer, discussion.
I really appreciate the changes that you made as per our discussion two weeks ago. Thank you.
Did it get submitted in time?
Submitted in time?
Yes, well, it's due at 5:00 o'clock today, 4:00 today, and...
So that's submitted in time?
Tomorrow.
Oh, tomorrow.
So we haven't pushed the button yet, but it is ready to go.
Very good. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Thank you, Linda. Number five, resolution to accept the low bid and enter to a contract agreement with Bulleye Associates of Auburn, New York for construction of the new Whitewire Pool House at Soggy Park, and the amount is $679,030 and no sense. Motion to consider. Katie Sullivan, second. Carlos Ferrer, discussion.
John, how many bids did you get? I'm just curious.
Yeah, we received two bids from general contractors, multiple bids from the specialty plumbing, electrical, and mechanical.
Were they all separate or was it just a combined bid?
They're all separate. So Bulleye Associates from Auburn, New York for the, that's the low bid, based on the base bid, and we're excited to get the project underway. Bulleye Associates, they're a family business, been in business for 75 years. They've done work locally with SUNY Portland, the Wise. Ironically, they built the city's wastewater treatment plant years ago, so they've been around.
What's the timeline?
We're still on schedule. We hope to have the building open June of 2020. So the next step upon approval from the common council will be to have a key stakeholders' meeting with the contractors, the engineers, our staff, and hopefully get started in January.
So I want a clarification. This one, it's just Bulleye, correct? Which is 537,000 of those, three others.
Correct. And I submitted in your packets, here's a breakdown, based on our engineering firms' recommendation who to go with, and the total construction project expenses is 679,030.
Plumbing's 91,000, mechanical's 72,000.
Correct. It's broken down in the packet.
Further discussion, questions for John? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Great work, John, keep it going. And our new number six, is a discussion and update on the Parker School Task Force. Who wants to take it away? We have a couple of visitors with us. We have Chrissy Gambetta, who is chair for the task force itself, Lynda Glennon from CAPCO, and some other familiar faces back there. I'm not sure if Kat or Katie, do you want to start or...
So I'll start. So just to recap, over a year ago, the mayor put together the Parker School Task Force, which had a number of people on it, from school board, from the community, from council, and we decided the first thing we should do is find out what the public thought should happen with this building. And overwhelmingly, the people in that neighborhood wanted to see children back in Parker School. So that was the first goal, is to see if we could do that. Then the task force reached out to local entities to see if there are any businesses that work with children that would be interested in being in the school. And CAPCO and the YWCA responded, as well as the Portland Christian Academy. Then we discovered that because of the type of loan that there was for the building, the Portland Christian Academy could not occupy the building. So I think right around that time, last June, the leaders of the task force came and presented their case to council, and we got to hear about how they were planning to afford the renovations that they wanted to do and just maintain the business of moving childcare into Parker School. They did a great job presenting, there were some questions on council, took those questions back. Do you want to take it from here?
So with those questions, there were some questions about the bonds with the state. In the end of November, we received an answer on that to understand that the city does not need to occupy any of the space that the city were to own it, as well as that the...
The way the debt is broken up, the largest part of the debt would be paid off first so that the city would be free to, if things didn't work out in five years, be able to sell the building right for fair market value, so we're not too locked into anything. And we, as a committee, met last week, and it just, everything's green light, we're ready to go. All of the Ts have been crossed, Is have been dotted, lawyers have been over it, Rick was at the meeting. We all agreed that if council's ready to vote on it, we can vote on buying the building for, I forget what the sum was.
$91, I believe was what they were...
Were they able to stick with the $91? The symbolic $91, okay.
You might want to explain too, you talked about the debt being paid off, the school district is the one paying off the debt, not the city.
Right.
Thank you.
Right, yes, for clarification. So there are several members in the audience tonight, if you want further clarification, we're just discussing it tonight, we're not asking for a vote on it tonight. But the next thing that will happen is after council votes on it, should council approve purchasing the building, then the school board will also vote on it, it'll be a 45-day public comment period. And then everything would be timed so that the building would come into our ownership at the very moment that CAPCO and YWCA are prepared to begin working on it and paying for the renovations that they want made. So it's really, I think it's going to be a great thing for Portland. I plan to vote yes. I think that the committee has done a great job for such a large number of people to persist and work through all of these things, and I think that the directors of CAPCO and the YW have done a phenomenal job nailing down the business end of things. They really know what they're doing, and it's going to be a boon to the community to have this daycare in our, right in the center of the city.
Only thing I can foresee is, obviously, you've done your homework, I believe everybody's going to be in favor, just some accurate numbers, the city's going to own the property, what's our lease term going to be with CAPCO and the Y? You know, we just got to see some hard numbers, obviously, because, you know, everything else is going on, a bunch of issues. I think that's all we got to have to look at.
Okay. Can we bring that to you when we bring into the vote?
And, you know, the timeframe, whether they're going to lease it for a five-year, 10-year, you know, because you do have to look at the facts. Like you said, if we end up with it, you're going to solve it for fair market value, but fair market value is going to be zero because there's no market.
So we're hoping to bring it to council the first meeting in January, which is the 7th.
Just so we have numbers in front of us so we can...
I'd like to see the numbers before the meeting.
Well...
Will you put in the package?
Two points of clarification, I'm sorry to keep interrupting.
No, please come up to the microphone, and then Rick can follow you.
Ask council to recognize, Michael, who's the superintendent for the school district?
You spoke about the 45-day waiting period, that's before, once common council, if you agree to buy it, and the school board will pass a resolution authorizing a vote because the public, I'm sorry, it's a public vote, the public also has to approve it.
Okay.
So there was one point.
Will that happen in 45-day time period? It's going to be probably longer than that.
If the council votes, your meetings are one week off from our meetings, so if you vote, and I'm just picking numbers here, on the 7th, our meeting would be on the 14th, the board would approve it, and the board would approve, the board clerk putting the notice in the paper on the 15th, then 45 days from then, you have to have a public referendum, earnings paper ballots, and then if the voters approve the sale, then the closing can actually take place. I think that's about it. There's another question that you raised, I can't remember where it was.
The bonds, maybe paying off the bonds.
Oh, about there not being a market for it? I've actually had people contact me that do want to buy it, mostly for senior housing. There is a mark out there, but I'm not saying it's going to always be there. And final point of thing to make, is the district is making no money on this. This is strictly, if we sell it for $91, our state aid is reduced by $91. If we sell it for $900,000, our state aid is reduced by $900,000. So it's net zero.
Thank you. No, you made that clearer last time.
Okay, just wanted...
Yeah, thank you. Sorry. So maybe, you know, lease and contract?
It looks like Rick is going to...
It's almost a... Okay. Thank you.
Now, who can talk about the bill that's for the government right now regarding childcare? That this decision is hinging upon?
I'm not aware of anything that would be connected with it.
I've heard something to the great fine, and that's why I'm saving it for tonight, to see if somebody can shed some light on it.
We do have a grant application in terms of the structure or potentially assisting a part of the costs, I'm not sure if that's what you're referring to. But the governor does have a task force that is comprised of individuals from throughout the state that is working on childcare and provision, and we do have a local rep, trying to remember her name, she's like your director of the wide deck, Kelly Tobin, which is why she's in Albany today. Okay. So there are discussions at the state level, but there's not a current bill in terms of childcare. But council did approve...
It doesn't impact this program, I mean this project.
Sorry?
What he's talking about doesn't impact our project. We get other money from other places. But the governor has made it a statewide initiative for childcare across New York State, not specific to Portland alone.
That's what I've heard, and there's some money that's hinging upon some decisions that would be funneled down to local municipalities regarding childcare.
My understanding is that's what the task force, that I think the mayor is speaking to, that's what they're working with the governor's office, that's what the hope is, that the governor is going to agree that childcare statewide is a significant enough concern, that he's going to put money in the budget to address broader childcare issues across the state. But I think what Jamie's saying is that that doesn't have any impact on the Parker project or the CAPCO, the YWCA, the collaboration that we're talking about for Parker. It doesn't impact that.
I guess a second thought would be whether the two entities that are investing in this would seek funding if something didn't become available.
Of course. There is, again, I, you know, we have been able to identify funding for getting into Parker for renovations that need to be done, and that's part of the importance of the city agreeing to have ownership, is the funding that we've been able to identify, that's pretty significant at this point, but it's only available to us if the city owns the property because it has to go through the city.
Municipality.
Municipality, I'm sorry.
Okay, that's, yes.
So is that the funding you're...
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Yes, so they...
I want to know exactly who it would go through.
The only way we can get it is if it goes through the municipality. So if the city were to decide not to purchase Parker and pursue this, CAPCO and the YW, even if there was a way that another group could purchase the building, those funds would not be available to us for this project. It has to go through the municipality.
Okay.
So the funding...
So, the funding, if I'm hearing you correctly, has to come through the city?
Yes.
To benefit you folks to take over this quote-unquote "school," then I think we're going to have to find somebody that's going to oversee the project, to manage the money, other than Mr. Cook. I think he's got enough on his plate, so there's going to be another, you know, just like the downtown revitalization, you got to hire, you know, a separate firm that's going to monitor the money, the run of program. I mean, you're talking some big numbers here. Do you have something else to look at? I'm just...
Would that be something that Tom would be interviewing?
You'd certainly want to discuss that with Rich.
Because, what I'm hearing is, you know, obviously, it's going to be another...
So, we're getting, yeah, you're looking down the road, which is always valuable, but I would briefly step back and review. So, if this comes before council January seven, council chooses to move forward, then the school board will vote the following week, and then if the school board chooses to go forward, this goes to a public referendum. So then, we would hear from the public whether or not they support this project, which makes a lot of sense to me, because everybody in our community, opportunity to weigh in. And the questions that you guys are raising definitely...
Are going to be the questions that are going to be here, and so that's...
Yeah.
Good.
Committee gets introduced in our own first.
Well, that's...
Not that you don't already have them in our own, it depends what the concern is going to be, because obviously, what we've been through with the budget issues will be...
Right, and that was part of why we wanted to bring it up again tonight. It's been several months since we last discussed it, we wanted to make sure if there were any other questions outstanding that we could bring more information forward for the next meeting.
So, very good.
Yes, sir, we'll be moved forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Very good. Our next agenda item, we are moving up, it was originally number eighteen, but let's talk about recycling in the city of Cora. This becomes number seven.
So, you see before you a flyer?
So, just to recap the recycling situation, we're all aware at this point that the county, as of January one, has identified that they will no longer take glass in with the coaming gold single stream recycling. They've also identified that down the line, if they're going to change, I believe it's June, June is when the plastics that are accepted for recycling will change the official, you know, so you've seen that only items with the top cap or lid don't include the top cap or lid in the bin. So, we, at our last meeting, had some folks from the county who came to kind of give us better sense from the timeline. Since that, we've also had a meeting with folks at the county to really understand the situation a little bit better. And it does sound like, you know, with the curbside recycling changes, I should also mention that, you know, the DEC has identified that if we have a municipal curbside recycling program for trash, there needs to be one for recycling, and there needs to be curbside recycling collection for both the single stream as well as the glass. So, we're at this point where we've identified a couple of different potential solutions, and I think we really need to identify one and move forward. Now, I believe I did hear that the county was willing to send out a citywide mailer for us, once we have identified a solution. And again, with it kicking in January one, we probably want to have a solution tonight. The sheet in front of you is just a draft starting point, so that we have something to think about, or figure out, you know, where we want to go from here. But, that includes if we were to do the option of collecting glass the first full week of the month, and then collecting the single stream the remaining weeks of the month, the idea being that that is the least cost prohibitive one, there's no additional cost for that, just a different system to get our residents focused on. So, this is just a sample of what we could consider if we wanted to move in that direction.
The only direction we got to move to.
Pretty much.
And Mr. Evans, you know, said we need a full week, and Rick mentioned last time that we need to start on the first, you guys have to do.
Yeah, and the county, you know, they can't put it off. And they're kind of between a rock and a hard place to, they are doing this to save people money, but they can use the glass, so that's a good thing.
It reduces transportation fees as well, so that's not a bad thing.
Well, our hauler, Mr. Adams, is also being very cooperative. He's willing to go with this, with this solution of picking up glass one week and picking up the other, recycling the other three weeks, which is really helpful. We did have some concerns expressed at the last meeting, one of them was to raise the price of the blue bags in order to pay for an additional truck and driver. So, that's one of your options. I think Kat and I are in favor of the third option, where we stagger the pickups.
And point of reference, the county highway superintendent, Charles Sudbrink, is present of those questions. He's here to help facilitate discussion, and I believe one of our legislators, Kathy Bischoff, is here as well, and she's been involved in the discussions. So, recommendation to review is the city going to last collection one week out of the month, and then the other typically three weeks would be regular recycling collection.
Like normal.
There would just be one week, that would be glass, and that would be the first full week in February. So, that would give people the month of January to potentially collect glass during January and have it ready for collection in February. For council, do you have...
Just one item, just to clarify that option, and that is, what do you want the citizens to put the glass in for that one week? Because they're going to obviously be collecting recyclables simultaneously, but you'll need another bucket. So, what's going to be acceptable? A paper bag, another tub, what? But, that's for you to decide, but it ought to be spelled out.
That's a good point, and it should be something sturdy, since we're talking about glass. One of the concerns was that the bin could get overturned or hit by a snowplow. We don't want shattered glass all over the place. So, yeah, thank you for that addition.
I don't think we need to put any more burden on the people. You have to specify what they need to put, the recyclable glass, it just needs to be out there.
It should be a recycling bin.
Yeah.
Right.
And a kind of plastic bin.
A plastic.
Right, and maybe we could identify some guidelines in partnership with DPW and our hauler. I would imagine we might want to make sure our hauler's on board with that. I know sometimes places will tell you, you know, you can put an R on a bin, and, you know, rubbermaid tote, whatever you're using, labeled with an R.
I put my recyclables in a tall...
Kitchen?
A tall garbage, outside garbage can, if they take it, there's no problem. Just keep it separate. The one, I have another one for the side, so you've never had a problem with taking it.
We used to have specific bins, but then those became too costly for the city to, they weren't making their money back. And so, then it just ended up being any plastic bin, tote, anything that works.
Totes are specified in a plastic tote.
Yeah.
I would think the hauler would just want to make sure there's a weight limit or a size limit on that. You know, just, you don't want a sixty-gallon bin out of there that you have to pick up full of glass, just for logistics. But, I think that we can probably get some great language of some sort of plastic in there.
Well, the county also agreed to make up stickers that our hauler, and our hauler agreed to use them, to put on bins saying, you know, you've got coaming gold glass and you can't do that, or some sort of sticker. So, that's good.
And then, we need it in a made-up.
Yeah. So, we should vote tonight on which option you want to vote with, what you think, gentlemen?
I'm not going to raise the prices, so do the ultimate election.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I think that's... So, we're going to add in a plastic, a plastic tote of some sort, specifying someone's going to buy it. We want this up on the flyer, we're hoping they're going to do.
Are there any other changes?
But there's got to be, I mean, I don't want Mr. Evans to come out the first week and just start refusing tracks. We've got to get these people, you know, like, here's your morning, thirty days.
Yeah, there's the month breaks.
We talked about.
Yeah.
That was part of the conversation we had, was that they were willing to be somewhat, you know, that we can phase in the way we enforce the stickers, but we do need to really start this.
So, Kat and I looked at the county's informational flyer, which had a lot of, a lot of information upon it.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, I boiled it down a little bit, and she boiled it down further with these images, because people tend to want a glance at things and get the information quickly, and there's a lot to read, they...
How soon?
Tomorrow.
Can you get them things sent out?
In a couple of days, I'm going to receive them, I said.
Okay, great.
So, next month's meeting will be January seven, so I should have one of them mailed by then?
Sounds like it.
Okay.
All right.
Not to put the pressure on, but you guys put the pressure on us, so I'll get the end of that.
We've been forward.
Okay.
So, resolution needs to include the change in terms of the collection for glass, and then, there is, and you touched upon it, but also the change in terms of what is being recycled regarding plastics. And in the flyer, just to reiterate, items with a top or cap that are recyclable, tops lids and caps are to be discarded. And the ones that we were talking about, Charlie, it's ones and twos, if you look at the little triangle, if you kill my gap, give me the microphone. Because this will be an ongoing public education campaign, and we want to make sure we start it right, and send a continual and consistent message.
I think there's a little misunderstanding with the June first deadline on the plastics. The plastics, right now, are just a recommendation, and they're going to continue being recommendations. We're just trying to make the recycle, the single streams more attractive to the mercs that take it from us. And that's part of the reason with glass, it's not just to save transportation and the hundred-dollar costs that you recycle, it makes that our recycle more attractive because of glass.
Yes.
Isn't worth anything to the company.
So, you want to make some money out of this.
But we're just trying to inform the public on which plastics are actually worth recycling. A lot of the little caps and stuff end up in the crushed glass at the mercs, because the machines can't...
Process.
They fall through and end up in the pile of crushed glass anyways.
Yeah. Part of the discussion the city had was if we are making changes in terms of glass, there are recommendations in terms of plastics, do it all at the same time.
Right.
But, what you're saying, so there is a change that is planned in June regarding the plastics.
No, we're hoping to see a difference by December. There's not going to be a mandated plastic number or anything like that. We're just trying to educate the public on which plastic we want them to recycle. I mean, we won't accept the styrofoam in the single-use food containers.
Yeah.
As far as the...
I'm trying to understand that a little bit more, because, for instance, I know Tompkins County does ones, twos, and fives, and I know they're sending their materials to the Ontario County Merc, and I would imagine that that's where their guidelines are coming from. So, I'm just trying to understand, you know, probably where you're marketing the materials through the facility that's handling the materials, is going to have guidelines that are specific to the types of plastics that might limit what we're collecting now.
No, they're actually going to do an audit on our recycling every month or so. And we've got to deal with them right now, at set price with five percent or less glass.
Right, glass, right. In terms of the plastics, did you get any guidelines?
We actually made those flyers up with the operator of the merc.
And the merc operator?
What is desirable for that merc to make our recyclables more...
These.
Attractive. And a lot of those around the list are it, like the styrofoam and stuff like that.
Whether they're doing it now or doing it then, I think we should just educate it now and be done with it.
That's what we were thinking.
But they're going to give us, it's very important, the county's going to give us a little lead with, unless it has to be with the situation, or it's already going to be with the issue. It's time, that we're starting now, it's got to be.
We'll take advantage of a citywide mailer that probably we won't have going on account for a while. And with the, with the merc, I'm just still trying to understand, the merc specifically doesn't care what number plastic they're getting in, they'd much rather focus on the tops and the lids.
The tops and the lids, and the clamshell containers, they don't want crunchy clams, shell containers, which is dumping out, the single use, actually, the laundry detergent bottles and milk jugs, they're one of the few commodities that are still with some, they're making furniture and garbage can.
Make some stuff in it to do it up.
And we're hoping we're doing the right thing by just recommending and educating the public, it leaves a little flexibility, and instead of just demanding certain numbers, because a couple of years from now, there may be other plastics and stuff that are worth money, then we could just make, you know, make that recommendation. As long as we're not losing too much on the plastics, we think the plastics will come back, unlikely to bias.
Good. So, how do you want to proceed from here? So, we just passed around, this, yeah, we passed around, this wasn't meant to be so big, it can be, it was meant to be like half-sheet size, it's just bigger, so we could, we could it really complete, and we like what you did with your blue cards, that's really catchy and good. So, you want to explain your vision, what the mailer would be like?
So, my understanding from the conversation I had with Ms. Parks was that you could do a one-page, kind of three-fold mailer, a dress would go on one side, mailer, sticker it over, or whatever, right, and the content goes, there's content on the inside, and on the other two-thirds of the page, if I understood right. So, it seems like one option might be to use the content from this very highly visible, kind of quick glance information that the county's already put together, and since it's approximately one side, just have it sit, you know, backpack, and then, since this was actually designed as a half-page, take something to the effect of this, if anybody wants it changed, it's not set in stone, it's draft, but then use that as a second half-page maybe.
What's Mr. Evans going to hand out when it gets, because obviously, you're not going to leave these in somebody's bin, you have to use something that's laminate, that's not going to...
Sticker, sticker.
Yeah, I think that's what the bin stickers would be for.
And if you'd like more education, we have hundreds of small laminate.
Because when your recycling bin gets back over, your mailbox gets back over, your paper gets wet, that'll last forever this long.
True. But, for the flyer that we want to get out really quickly, should we just send this information over to Ms. Parks and...
Yes, and if you see, see my, okay.
Okay.
Great.
Is there room for a calendar to show them full weeks, so you can block out this is the last week, and at least give three or four months of examples, so that people are seeing it? I don't...
Like we do with the recycling.
Exactly, that's what I was considering.
Yeah, no, the recycling mailer that's sent out typically in March would need to be updated and changed to reflect these changes. So, it would be a follow-up in addition to this. Our annual flyer would be adjusted to show the changes in the program. And, Rick, that's an excellent suggestion, because there's already a calendar, I believe, on that.
So, that's something that DPW has?
Yes, yes.
Mails that out every year.
Do you have a timeframe? I think until like mid-June or, no, before that, because they're going to print it. Yeah.
Is your bike chance going to be getting out a little there, or is it sure, because of what we're doing here?
I don't think we'd be able to.
That'd be another helpful thing.
Maybe you'd come in and lick a couple envelopes, but I think we're...
Okay, so, should we vote on this, or should we vote?
I'll submit the following language, let me know if this makes sense. Resolution to change the city's recycling collection program to designate the first full week of each... Resolution to change the city's recycling collection program to designate the first full week of each month, beginning in February of 2020, as a glass recycling only collection week. Other weeks will be, uh, for plastics and beer. Commingled. Commingled excluding glass. Make sure it's clear.
Sounds good.
How's the wording sound?
Sounds good.
Links, suggestions, hearing none, then we need a motion to consider it, a resolution. Captain McCarthy, second, Troy Beckwith, discussion. Which added?
Yeah.
A little backwards.
I wanted to make sure we had them. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We can't thank you. Captain Charlie, thank you for working with us on this.
Thank you.
We want to pose some challenges, but nothing we can't work through. Seven, we are on number eight. But officially, it's number eight, it's the resolution to accept, recognize, and appropriate the following donations to the youth bureau. We have a donation from the Cortland County Club Women's League to go to the Jim Partisianoni Scholarship Fund. Motion to consider. Troy, second, Katie, discussion?
Just love that people are making these donations, it really helps. Thank you.
Absolutely. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. So now the new number nine, resolution approved, Connie Sorrells for the annual stipend of $3,000 for the 2019 telephone system responsibilities, uh, for the city of Portland. Uh, there is an MOU clarification, this is paid at the, well, it's paid in January of 2020, but it is for the 2019 responsibilities, uh... So hopefully this meets with Connie and her representative's approval, but I wanted to make sure I did put under number one on the contract that it would say 419 and also, uh, management of the city's cellphone and wireless contract, because that has been part of them. There's been some discussion about that, but this is retro for this past year. This is not 2020, we'll have some discussion about that later.
Also the phone system, the total duties.
So phone system, the internet, so if something crashes, I, I can, here we go. Field phone system help desk calls, on-premise phone system errors, troubleshooting, place and track, phone system support tickets, managing phone system configurations, and assisting the IT department in initial help desk calls. And as many people who are familiar with modern technology, the phones are not the phones. They're not your grandparents' or even your parents' phones, they are, uh, main computers. Motion to consider, I don't think I called for a motion, did I? Bill Carpenter, second, Carlos Pereira, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Connie, thank you for doing that. Number ten, consideration of resolution to appropriate $1,047.18 direct deposit from the finance office to A3120-408, the city police budget. Uh, represents a partial reimbursement for the Department of Justice for the purchase of ballistic vests for our officers and funds can go towards the annual purchase of new vests for officers as outlined in the CBA agreement between the PBA and the CFC, is your comment? Motion to consider. Tom Michaels, second, Bill Carpenter, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Number eleven, uh, this is for Chief Catalano, a discussion, he's going to share with us some of what will be in the future for law enforcement, starting January one. Uh, there's been some changes at the state level that will have a ripple effect. Chief?
Yes, thank you. I don't know how much each of you individually have, uh, paid attention to some of the changes in law and how it's going to affect the law enforcement and prosecutors in New York State. Most commonly referred to as criminal justice reform and its bail reform and discovery law rule changes. I don't wanna go into a lot of depth on either one because I could be here all night if I do that. Law enforcement across the state, the state chiefs organizations, sheriff's organizations, the district attorneys organizations have come out with press conferences and detailed on all the reasons why these reforms, as they are presented now to take effect on January first, are gonna be terrible for our state and for law enforcement and prosecution. I would behoove you all to take a look at what these are, if you haven't already, and feel free to give me a call or stop in to discuss anything that you think may concern you. There are gonna be a lot of crimes now that bail cannot be placed on. Some of them would've been okay, but the ones that they've included in here have gone beyond pale as to not just what, uh, police can bring to an arraignment, uh, to a judge, but the judge's ability to even be able to put bail, um, is, is greatly limited. As well as getting defendants to appear. So bail reform is, is one issue that's, I think, gonna be a huge problem. I think we're gonna have people on the street repeatedly committing offenses that they wouldn't have if we could maybe give them a break, um, in jail for a couple of days. The bigger issue right now for us is going to be the discovery rule, the law changes. Um, it's got, uh, all police agencies and district attorneys on edge. We don't know how we're gonna possibly be able to comply with the laws as they're written now, to take effect on January first. In Cortland County, no police agency and a district attorney has the personnel or the means to comply with all the changes that are occurring. And most, most specifically, discovery is pretty much anything of evidence review value that is obtained during an investigation. Everything is turned over to the prosecutor, the district attorney's office, as needed by prosecutor. Currently, not everything is discoverable unless it's asked for by the district, or by the defense attorney. This, these new rules will require that any, any evidence at all that the police department have, which is automatically assumed that the prosecutor has, has to be turned over to the district, to the defense attorney within fifteen days of arraignment. That's gonna be literally impossible in many, many cases. Uh, and my concern is, and the district attorney's concern is, that there's gonna be a lot of charges that will fall through the cracks and injustice will not be served. Victims will be revictimized. Because of all the different changes in the rules. Every bit of information that we have, which includes victims, witnesses, their addresses, their phone numbers, everything about them is discoverable to the defense attorney within fifteen days of arraignment. Confidential informants includes all of that. It's gonna be a nightmare. We've implored, employed, we've implored our legislative body here in New York State to take a break and let this take effect on January first, give it a few more months, bring in stakeholders such as police, law enforcement, and the prosecutors to do this right. If we want reforms and we can have reforms, and we do need some reforms, but it needs to be done right. And at this point, it's been done wrong. What's gonna happen is my officers are gonna spend more time doing administrative duties to try to get things together or to get it to the district attorney so that we don't lose a case. When I mean everything, I mean everything, every piece of evidence, even video evidence, 911 phone calls, everything. We have to be able to obtain that, get it to the district attorney so that he can have it to the defense attorney within fifteen days of a defense arraignment. It's gonna be nearly impossible. So, we're gonna do our best to keep our officers on the road and do what they need to do. But we can't ignore what the district attorney needs as well, because the remedy is sanctions up to dismissal of a case. And we don't want that, that's not good for our community, it's not good for anybody. But I won't take up any more time on that, but I would, I would ask you to look into this, talk to your state representatives, if you feel there's a need. And if you have any questions at all, call me, email me, stop in, see me, and I can go over it.
I've already heard the same thing out of my wife's office, so... That's, that's sure.
But thank you, if you have any questions now, I think you're trying to answer them, but...
What kind of crimes are we talking about?
As far as the bail reform? Uh, almost everything, other than murder, assaults with a weapon, and sex crimes.
Crazy.
Domestic violence. If an order of protection is requested, otherwise no.
And what it does is allow an individual that is arrested for a crime to go back and, and find out what they did wrong and they get a second shot at whatever they're trying to do to succeed.
Well, the one particular issue that is really stuck in a lot of people's crawls is burglary in the second degree, which is a felony. That's intrusion into somebody's home to commit a crime. If we catch somebody in that act, we have to give an appearance document.
Also, that, isn't that, if somebody commits burglary in your house, from the DA's office in Tappus County, that the defense counsel has a right to go into the crime scene, meaning your house, to the victim, to look at the crime scene?
To build their defense.
So it's serious issues.
Yeah. That, these reforms were washed through during the budget session with no input from law enforcement or prosecutors, which is not the way to do reform. If you, if you have the desire, please let your state representatives know. And, um, I think it's kinda too late right now and I, I don't think it's being heard, but we'll see where it goes. Some of it may have to be litigated, as it's gonna be impossible to do. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. So that was item number eleven, there was a request, uh, Chief, can you tell, share with council? Because this came up after our department had meeting, but we were anticipating a potential retirement.
Yes, I was just notified yesterday, Sergeant Pat Sweeney, uh, his intention to retire effective January third. Came rather quickly, uh, we knew that it was getting close, but we had no dates or anything, so he just advised me of that, um, formally. So what I would ask is for the, um, ability to, uh, make a promotion to replace Sergeant Sweeney and then, uh, hire off the civil services, a new police officer to fill that vacancy. We're currently doing a background on two individuals that we hope, that we are going to get into the Syracuse Police Academy that starts on January twentieth. If it's possible, we could get that third one in as well, uh, which would be a good thing. Otherwise, we'd have to wait for another academy to pop up in March or April. So, we're, if, if we can get the okay to do this, I'll, we'll push to try to get a third one into that academy. And Syracuse Police Academy is no cost.
So I think we need, uh, let's see if we can go with three resolutions. First one, consideration of resolution to lift, lift the hiring freeze for a patrol officer officially and also motion of an officer to the title of sergeant?
Yes.
Motion to consider, Bill Carpenter, second, Katie Solomon, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Second, uh, consideration of a resolution to promote a, it would be a patrol officer, chief?
What title would you hire a patrol officer?
But the promotion would be a patrol officer.
Yes.
Our, a patrol officer. Resolution to promote a patrol officer to the title of sergeant, effective January third, 2020. Motion to consider. Katie Solomon, second, Tom Michaels, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And third and final, consideration of a resolution to lift, to hire a patrol officer to start January third, 2020. Motion to consider. Troy Beckwith, Louis Hagen, Carlos Pereira, any discussion there?
We wouldn't start him on January third, probably closer to the twentieth.
The position...
You can't say closer to the twentieth. How about the eighteenth? That's fine. Anytime after the third. It won't be vacated until the third.
All right. I'll say January eighteenth officially, in terms of the starting date. Very good. Motion on the floor, we have support, discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, thirteen, fourteen. Run out of fingers. Thank you, chief. Number fifteen, resolution, resolution authorized the mayor to execute an agreement for policy on workers' compensation insurance through PERMA for one year, for one year, ending December thirty-first of 2020 to continue and cooperate to be established with other Portland County municipalities to resolve pending 2018 through 2019 workers' compensation cases. Motion to consider. Sixteen. We have a motion from Captain McCarthy, second, by Katie Solomon, discussion?
Listen, you're entering to a agreement for one year. You're literally going to a cooperative, others going for the years afterwards.
No, the cooperative would be simultaneously with us entering into the PERMA group. PERMA will be handling new cases starting 2020. The cooperative will be handling what we refer to as tail cases, cases that are still continuing on. And there's money that the county has, uh, that will be used to, uh, pay those claims for a year and as we, as we develop that, so that, so it's really two tracks of that, sort of kind of.
And this is in line with what's been discussed with the county group? Am I understanding that right?
Yes, there has been ongoing dialogue with representatives from the county and very, I think initially everybody with the exception of one village, uh, I believe we have three, maybe four towns that may not be proceeding with the agreement. But for the city and the other towns in the county, this seems like a no-brainer. I can't imagine somebody not wanting to do this in the way that is currently structured and planned. I mean, to try to change this now, I think that would create a lot more problems. Because this has gone, as you remember, two weeks ago, I stayed over at the meeting for this. John started the meeting, Cabe Overston had off the press. And after the city, uh, various other towns, villages reeled off their approval as well, this has widespread support throughout the county, within the towns, villages, and of course, the city, so... I think the county, the county doing this would be a wise move.
The ones that, uh, didn't enter into the agreement have to pay more for their, their, to obtain the same coverage?
Well, a couple of the towns, I'm gonna do the impression that they've gone and gotten individual votes, which the city did as well. And they may not have tail train, they may not have outstanding claims. So then what happens is they're able to potentially get a different number and it might be less expensive. But essentially, everybody is moving from the county-run workers' compensation, county-run, county-managed plan to collectively, not everybody, but just about every, everybody working with PERMA, which this is what they do for a living. And there are a couple of towns in one village that, um, are doing that either with PERMA or another company compliance, but they're doing that individually on their own. Well, this, this is something that the city has been advocating for. Some of the towns, the villages have been advocating for it for several years. It's been a quick process, which has raised a little bit of discomfort because it's not easy to go through things like this quickly. But, uh, this is, I believe, a necessary move, there's a strong cost avoidance. And the current structure was done to make the plan as attractive as possible, not just to the county, but also to the city and the towns and the villages. And the current structure makes a lot of sense. And to change it at this point, at the eleven and a half hour, uh, I would not understand the logic. Further questions, discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Seventeen?
Aye.
Told you, ran out of fingers. Resolution amended 2020 adopted general fund budget. The issue here, there's a lot of whereas's, but there was a proposal at the state level to increase the arterial agreement. And that is money that the city gets for maintaining state highways within the city limits, i.e. Clinton Avenue, Tom case. However, that potential increase was not granted, so that is a revenue decrease. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Katie Solomon. For the public's information, where's the number? Balance and contingency becomes 162, 89,800. That's the amount that goes down, right, Matt?
Yes.
Decrease is 89,000. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You don't have to like it. It's the right thing. Number 18. Resolution to amend 2020 adopted general fund budget to reflect the state's cessation of SUNY Impact Aid program and the increased emphasis being placed upon local tax on internet sales. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Katie Solomon, discussion. So we've been fortunate that our state senator has advocated in the last couple of years, we've gotten SUNY Impact Aid, which the argument is that with all the value that SUNY brings to the community, there's also additional expenditures, in particular in public safety, both police and fire. And that is not in the 2020 budget. But Matt, we're looking at a potentially, potentially an increase in the sales tax revenue based upon the state taxing internet sales. So the net impact upon the budget theoretically is zero. Discussion. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries? Number 19. Resolution to amend 2020 adopted general fund budget as follows to reflect reduction in tonnage and projected increase in blue bag prices. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. This is, before we get into discussion, do we have support for the motion? Always want it down. Thank you, Kat. All right, so. Parentheses were removed. Thank you, Matt. Revenue increase trash collection services. The, part of the crux of the issue is increase in tipping fee and also we have a three-year contract with our hauler going into the second year of the current three-year contract. There is an increase in the tonnage by the hauler in the agreed-upon contract. So that poses an increase in our anticipated costs for next year. With the review to this point in terms of 2019, and I believe Bob Chris has said this several times, we are seeing what appears amount to a net increase of about five pounds per bag. So if you take up the amount of tonnage that's going to landfill and the number of bags sold and you do simple math, it appears that the numbers work out so that the number of blue bags sold equals out to about five pounds of trash more going into landfill. So best supposition is that people may be packing more to the trash bags than they were, which skews the numbers slightly.
Keep raising the price of blue bags, they don't stuff as much as they can.
Yeah.
It's just. It's not going to go down. Raise the price again, they're not going to buy it or they're going to keep stuffing more stuff in there. Never going to match up, right?
Be surprised how much those blue bags.
Or eventually people are going to, they're going to private haulers.
For a family side of private haulers, if not. I'll surprise you. Price it on itself. But if you raise it, it's going to exceed and before they go to private haul.
I think the one benefit of the blue bag program that we often overlook is the fact that it encourages waste reduction. You know, you pay for what you throw away. That includes your recycling collection at the curb. So, you know, for the cost of what you're throwing away, you also cover the cost of what you're getting recycled. But it also makes us aware of what we're throwing away. And ideally, hopefully, we're thinking about what we're purchasing so that we can reduce what we have to throw away and cut down the cost of that, right? I think that's, that's the flip side of what we're looking at here.
This is just so discouraging because we just had this conversation and the whole point was not to raise the blue bag cost. And we just raised it in the budget anyway, so. But we have to cover our costs.
If council would like to further consider, we can always come back and revisit in January. More time to think, more time to discuss.
Is there any issue that arises if we don't make a decision tonight? As far as budget goes or?
Contract isn't plates, our costs are costs. Like any budget when we talk about.
Down the end, what's going to, what the overriding, what the overriding is going to be is what's going to come down with the improvement. They're in a story. We're going to have to make it up somewhere. Never enough that HDM will recycle, unless. They're there to the secretary to answer phones.
So if we wait until January, yes, the problem could potentially get a little bit deeper, but it also gives us the full, should give us a full snapshot with regard to 2019 and what the costs and the revenues were. We are still dealing with projections and we're only looking at the last one of 19, but.
Maybe we'll have the actual data, make a, some other strategies.
Do you have some?
Not yet.
I have the right, awful, we gotta look at the.
Before people can go get their own haulers.
Just want to make everybody else pay more too. Keep that in mind.
I'd like to see some accurate numbers myself.
Yes.
Can we table?
Table if you want. We have the, make a motion now.
Yeah, I would, I would also recommend you wait, maybe to the second meeting in January or the first meeting in February, that way you have your information.
So the motion is to consider tabling the agenda items of the second meeting in January, which will be the 21st, does that sound accurate?
Yes.
You have a second.
Who is your second?
Who's making, who wants to move that forward? Troy, table?
That was item number 19.
19.
Who's second?
I'll second. Support, Tom Michaels. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Considerate table. Number 20. Consideration of resolution approval, local law for amendment of section 300 of the code removing student residence and cloud references to said language. Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter.
Not this one. Kat, Kat, not this one. You want to, not this.
The second one is the.
The 16 is the amendments that include those issues that you raised. This number one is just cleaning up.
We do have a motion, I'll ask before we continue the conversation, if we have support, then we can, you can always table that. Katie Solomon, second, now. Okay, Katie?
Okay. This one is the one where we have, we're just tidying up the language.
That's right. This is, this is the stuff that was left over after you moved the overlay district for student housing, so we're just cleaning that up.
So that's fine. Okay.
Motion's on the floor, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries?
This next one, would like you to consider a tabling, but to a date later in January or early February so that we can, I'll take a look at the things that Steve Muppa addressed. And I know you raised some issues relative to the stacking issue and I, I don't, this.
Matt, it's brought up from a couple other people too.
And I know the clarification was opposed to me, but it's not, not standing as my. So if you would do that, table to a date certain, but why don't we try February? February gives plenty of time. In case they have to do another over law.
February 4th?
That works for me, yeah.
Yeah. So a motion from Troy, table it to February 4th, we have support. Katie Solomon, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Table.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And 2021, is this being 22?
Yep.
For local law amending section 74-20 letter A of the city code, animal harboring.
This is simply allowing the SPCA and any other dog, troll officer, the police, for example, to, to address the harboring of animals as it is in zoning. I think it's three dogs, a number of cats, that kind of thing. It's very difficult for it to be in the, simply in the zoning statutes. Pop just doesn't have the ability to do that with the resources he has. So the more the merrier on this issue. But it is becoming an issue that's addressed regularly in city court and municipal prosecution. So it's not, it's not a small issue.
Right.
Discussion.
Right, there's no motion.
Uh, motion to consider. Troy Beck with, second, Katie Solomon, discussion. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Carries?
Thank you, council.
We do have budget information for council. There is six official pages. Any questions, discussion regarding the budget? As we wrap up 2019, Carlos Ferrer, thank you for your service.
Yes.
I've appreciated getting to know you, working with you on council and then working with you in the role as mayor because we were both on council when you started. And I have found you to ask challenging questions at times, which are the government. Sometimes we have to ask difficult questions because some of the solutions are not easy to come to. And appreciate the time and effort that you put in. Thank you. Is there any further business to come before the council this evening?
Well, we have a. Real quick on that, Cameron, we'll have Carlos. Real quick, I just want to bring people up to date on what we're doing.
Motion to adjourn into executive session, executive session for labor discussion, one or two.
One.
One labor contract?
Yes.
No action anticipated afterwards? Motion to consider. Bill Carpenter, second. Carlos Ferrer. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?